Hi. Welcome, everybody, to the May 2, 2023 regular meeting of the Foxborough School Committee. Call this meeting to order. And in light of our annual traditions, mandates, really, and recent election. The first item up tonight is school committee reorganization. And congruent to school committee policy BDA, school committee organizational meeting. The first item up is to call for nominations for a new chair, which I will entertain presently.
I would like to nominate Richard Pearson to be the next chair of the Foxborough School Committee.
Any discussion in the committee?
For second?
Second.
I'll second.
We have whoever's first, Mr. Campfield will go with second. So all those in favor of-
You have to do a roll call vote.
Rich Pearson, being this upcoming year's chair, will vote as a roll call. I'll go opposite what I used to do. Ms. Ladani, first.
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Aye, for me.
Aye.
Mr. Campfield?
Yes.
Excellent. Lovely. So with that, 500, it has passed. Mr. Pearson, you are now the chair.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I yield all the things gladly.
Well, thank you, Brent, for your service this year as well, too. Before we go on, can we have nominations for vice chair of the committee?
I would like to nominate Sarah Ladani for vice chair, please.
Second.
Any further nominations? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote. I'll start at the other end. Michelle, would you like to start for vice chair?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Aye for me?
Aye.
Are you sure?
Vice Chair, Sarah. Welcome, Sarah, and thank you.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Again, Brent, thank you for your service this year. It's a lot of work to be the chair, and I'm excited to lead you as well again for this coming year, everyone. So thank you very much for your trust in me as well. Next, we have open public comment on the meeting. We have one person, AJ. Open public comment. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. AJ Dooley, 75 Ridge Road. First off, I would like to start off by sending my condolences to Mr. Pearson for the loss of his mother, Colleen Pearson. I would like to start off with that. I'm very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Secondly, I'd like to welcome Michelle to the school committee. Congratulations, and we look forward to having you lead us. Okay. Over the past few weeks, we have sold over 700 Warrior signs, which is probably 500 more than any of our school committee members got to put out in front of people's lawns when they were asking if they could get support from people. Not saying that you didn't have that support, but it's tough to get people to go out on a limb for people sometimes, but we got 700 lawn signs out there, which I thought is phenomenal. So my quick math, if there's 300, I mean, three people per household, we got about 2,100 people that have stuck a lawn out in front of their house that said, "We support being the Warriors," and our logo. Next, I would like to say that we've also started to get some signatures, and we have over 2,100 signatures from residents in the town. And I think that that's pretty amazing, seeing that we had 324 people show up to vote yesterday. Pretty sad number. So sad number, that 324 people showed up, amazing number, the support that we have for this logo. Next, I would also like to say that, I think it was five weeks ago, I need to let the board know that I filed a petition or a complaint against the Ethics Board against Mr. Pearson in regards to his involvement with the MIAA, and I would like for him to recuse himself on his vote. I had a personal conversation with Mr. Pearson about this, so he is not blindsided by this. I was very upfront about it. And I feel as if there is a conflict of interest there in regards to the MIAA is so involved with athletics in the state of Massachusetts. And I think personally that this could help him at his job if he helped get rid of a Warrior logo in a town. It is nothing personal, but they also did not have to open this investigation. They could have sent me a letter saying, "Sorry, we do not think that there is anything there." I have not received that letter. I have checked back in, and that investigation is open. So I am very happy to see that the board has stepped back and has not made a decision to vote tonight, because I think that, as a town, we would look foolish if we voted and we made a decision, and then we found out that Mr. Pearson should have recused himself from this. There have been a few times when myself and many others have wished that Mr. Pearson did not recuse himself in an instance with Foxborough Athletics, but we have felt that he has recused himself by not returning phone calls. Respectfully, I say that. So that is what I had to say tonight. I think I had one more thing, and then I'll be done. My phone just shut off. And I guess lastly, I think that is it. So I hit on everything. Again, everything is respectfully. There will be a winner, and there will be a loser. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is it it for a public comment? It's the only public comment I have, so we'll move on to approval of minutes.
Minutes?
Yes, approval of minutes. Or did we have, I didn't see any in the packet either.
Minutes for-
April 4?
Regular meeting for April 4. I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes from April 4, 2023.
Second. I don't have any questions, comments, or concerns about them, so second.
Any note comments? Good. All in favor of the approval of the minutes for April 4, 500. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
I think next, we have our teaching and learning highlight.
I'll go ahead.
All right, I'd like to invite our guests up to the table, and this is going to be kind of an update of where we are with the NEASK process. We know that this is a lot of work, and we've talked about it a little bit here with some of the focus groups and things that have taken place. I see Dr. Waznuski, she's walking in the door now, so I'll just give a little bit more information before she walks in. So this is about our accreditation that goes through high schools every 10 years, and some of you were part of those focus groups that we already had earlier this school year. And the information they're going to present tonight is where we are from after we had the collaborative conference and the visit from the visiting team that came. So that's just kind of a frame, and I will hand it off to our high school co-chairs and our principal.
Before you do that, can I just ask a question or maybe recognize something? Do I have it right that you are now Dr. Donovan?
That is correct.
Good.
I was going to have that as part of my update.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We should coordinate better. I'm sorry.
Is the balloon drop ready?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I was purposely naming names without reason to give him his own spotlight there, but since you went there.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to you. Thank you for your leadership. We're pleased for you-
Thank you.
-for advancing your own personal career and bringing that to us as well. So thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Well, so good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to be here with Dr. Waznuski and Mrs. Derico to share with you some highlights from our NEASK collaborative visit. So I don't actually have the clicker.
I will get that for you.
Thank you. So NEASK as an organization is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They are one of the six regional accrediting bodies. The New England region is kind of unique in that it also does all the international students and international schools all around the world that are accredited, and they went through a major process of updating their standards, the 2020 standards, and so this was our first accreditation using those standards. So FHS began the process of going through a self-study in 2021. They formed a steering committee led by Mrs. Derico and Dr. Waznuski that had done an incredible amount of work. We had to gather information about all the different standards in the accrediting process, in the accreditation process, and that group also included Mr. Johansson Meyer, Mr. Strubel, Mrs. Borges, and Ms. Barrett. And we hosted our first visit this past October. They gave us a progress in planning, and as part of that, we give them a progress in planning report, and then they give us their, they will come back in '24 to do our final accreditation. Excuse me, I said that back. We owe them a report in 2023, and then they come back in 2024. And provided that all that goes well, we will get our decennial accreditation, and we are very much on track to do that.
Sure. So talking about the commendations that the committee found when they did their visit, they commented on the safe and positive and respectful culture of the school. They mentioned the collegial and supportive relationships that we have between administration and teachers and students. They talked about the use of project-based learning that we have in the 11th grade English classes. They commented on the availability of technology that we have in the school. They mentioned the collaboration that we have with the community, with higher education and local businesses that offer a range of programs to support student learning. They talked about the variety of school-to-career opportunities and programs that we have for students. They talked about the collaboration and coordination among school personnel to identify at-risk students, engaging, supporting, and monitoring them to make sure that they make progress on academic and social-emotional goals. They talked about policies, procedures, and protocols developed to ensure a safe environment for students, faculty, and staff. And they talked about the adequate and dependable source of funding that fully supports the learning and range of co-curricular programs that we have at the school. Those were the commendations.
So the next part of the self-study were the findings, the areas that we have to be working on in the next couple of years, and part of our plan reflects that work that we are then going to be doing over the next couple of years. So they found that we do meet four of the six foundational elements, so there are two major foundational elements in the NEASK programming that we need to be working on, one of which is the updated written curriculum for all courses, both core courses as well as our elective programs. It needs to be in the same format and also needs to be forward-facing for the community. So that is work we need to be getting in progress by the time they come in October of 2024. The second foundational element has to do with ensuring that that written curriculum, again, is standard, it has curriculum mapping, and it is something that we can show to the community. So those are two of the foundational elements that they want us to look at. Then there were four priority areas that they gave us specifically, and I know that one of our slides, we think, got deleted, which is priority area one and two.
Yes, so we have a missing slide. So I'm just going to read. So the first one has to do with our vision of a graduate. So this is a process that we're embedded, we're working in anyway, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but that is one of our major priority areas. The second is to develop a school-wide organizational practices that meet the diverse learning needs of each student and promote equity for all students. And I'll get you a copy of that missing slide. Oh, you have it?
No, we don't have one that calls out one and two.
Twenty-two, yes. That is the one that's missing, and I apologize for that. So what that means for an organizational environment is basically how our school day functions. Is our school day optimized currently to meet the needs of our students and all of the intervention programs that we offer? And is it best aligned? The third, which is here, is that Foxborough High School Development Implemented Process of Interventions and Strategies to Support the Academic, Social, Emotional Success of All Students. And these have timelines here, so by June of 2027. And our goal there is that we kind of will do some of our schedule work ahead of that, our kind of operational day life ahead of that, and then this will come after. Once we get the day optimized, we can then really make sure that all of these pieces are in place. And then finally, that, as Mrs. Derico mentioned before, that all of our curriculum documents are forward-facing, that they're published, and that they are all in alignment, including with the vision of the graduate.
Yes.
Dr. Donovan, may I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Thanks. Mostly just because I endured this process myself, and it can be incredibly powerful. If you don't mind me asking you to share your cards, with number three, what does that look like? Like, I mean, if you had your wish list of, in terms of schedule, what are the, I mean, mostly just, I'm just asking you to flesh it out, and if I'm jumping ahead in your presentation, then I'll just wait, because I'm so patient.
It's a really good question. I think the answer is probably very different for me than it is for Dr. Waz and for Mrs. Derico, because they have lived in our environment for longer, and they have more experience in it, and they have seen it adjust a little bit.
Well, I'm comfortable with variable opinions.
Yes, no. So I think for what we, unlike other schools in the district, we struggle because of how our day is distributed-
Correct.
-and how our students move in our seven periods, or dropping one, and we go in reverse order, which is its own, which solves unique problems, that it's very difficult to get teachers together during the day.
Yes.
So we can't get ninth-grade teachers or 10th-grade teachers to talk together about kids during the school day, which is because we don't have team meetings. We're not structured like a middle school, we're not structured like an elementary school. So there are ways, schools have experimented and have implemented different strategies for how to create that time during the day. If we have to look and kind of explore, when we look at the schedule, we have to look at the values of the district, the programs that we want to make sure that, under no circumstances, get changed, and also the constraints that we have to work in, whether it be shared staff, whether it be times of day, whether it be the amount of physical spaces we have at any time-
Sure.
-and then figure out how we bridge those. And so I don't think that work has started and stopped at different times-
Sure.
-over the last 10 years. And I think, once we get our vision of a graduate, we're going to be able to say, what we want to be able to do is build our, and think about what that environment will look like-
Yeah.
-build it around the vision of the graduate. So I think to say, right now, this is what I want it to look like exactly, would be, I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse there. But I do think what we need is better, we need more time for our teachers to collaborate more, not just about planning-
Right.
-but also about kids. And we need kids to be able to get into classes and not necessarily reduce their course load to get interventions, because right now, for students to-
For them to get interventions, they're in less-
They're in less classes.
Yeah, they basically have less latitude in their schedule.
Well, because every minute of the day is scheduled.
Okay.
So if you're going to access our math tutoring, that means you have one less class you're taking, unless you have a study hall and you can flex it in and out. So, and those opportunities aren't available to all students. So we are very grateful that we have them all, and we just have to figure out how we arrange it, once we get the vision of the graduate set.
Well, continuing to speak out of turn, because I will, with permission of the chair-
Go ahead.
Thank you. You have five of five members on this committee who either imminently know what you're talking about because they worked in the system, the system like it, and/or they have kids who've gone through the system and have seen these stresses. And so all I will say is, as you and your team continue to explore these options, please continue to be excruciatingly clear about how you all feel you can best help kids, because that is a natural tension in high school, is we schedule these kids to the hilt, and then we still have student services, and we still have all these other things they want to do, and all the other things guidance wants to do, and so on and so forth. So I'm grateful for your efforts and just, again, speaking out of turn, but how I know people on this committee, that the minds are open. So we would love to hear what you all come up with.
Thank you. Okay. So just a quick update on the progress we've made since the fall, when NEASK was here. So we have been working on our vision of the graduate. We held focus groups in February. We had community members, I think we had 60 to 70 community members from all the different schools, from industry, from town government, from services, from people who are just involved in the community, to help us gather some focus group feedback on what are the skills, attributes, the behaviors, the-
Dispositions.
Dispositions, that's the word I was looking for, of learners. And that's the language that comes out of the NEASK accreditation process. And so we have now been in the process over the last couple of months of taking that focus group data and bringing it to every school in the district to get feedback from faculty and school councils, to help to refine that focus group data so that we can come back in the fall with, to you, to get some feedback on what a vision of the graduate would look like, and work for the district. And so we also have been working, Dr. Burrows has been leading an effort across the district to help standardize our curriculum template that we'll be able to publish to families, and we hope to start publishing that in the late summer, fall, across the district, and to have all of our FHS curriculum published by the end of next year. So we're going to start with all of our major course curriculum, and by that I mean like English IX, English X, and then get to focus on the electives like in the second tier. But that's where we hope to have all that completed by the end of next year.
Rob?
So I know we're going to get the slide that we're missing, but on the number three and number four, you have dates, June 2027 for number three, June 2025 as a, what are the dates for number one and two? Just because I didn't write that down when you told us what they were.
Yes, no, absolutely, I haven't. So the vision of the graduate is by June 2025-
Okay.
-and the school-wide organizational practices, which is the schedule is by June 2027.
Okay.
Oh, that's nice.
Thank you. So we have, so June in June, so '25 and '27 are the, so, and in looking at these, the dates that you have on here, I guess, to complement what Brent had said, are, do you have concerns about working toward those dates? Are there barriers that we can help remove in any way so that you can keep to those dates that you've committed to? At this time, maybe not right now.
Yeah, I don't think.
I don't think so.
I think so.
I would just like to, I saw you go, like, oh, 2027. I think that as far as the working of the schedule, the kind of possible testing of schedules, working towards figuring out what that schedule may be-
Yeah.
-we're definitely looking at, the vision of a graduate is included in that sort of schedule building, so we need to make sure that we're incorporating that. So we have to have that created, that settled. The curriculums are all working documents, they're always going to be moving, so as much as we have these great target dates that we seem to be really attainable for us, there are some things that will be sort of adjusted in time.
Of course. I didn't appreciate that we had that much time. So in my own mind, I was thinking, like, you all had-
Let's do it like now.
Yeah, no, honestly, I thought you had like a two-year runway, and then I'm starting to shake over here.
When they come in 2024-
But it seems like, yeah.
Shannon and I have both been on decennial visits, so when they come back in October of 2024, what they want to see is that we have a plan. They want to see that we have a progress in place, that we have moved in the direction that they're looking for. So they want to see how much we've gotten from this past visit in October to how those two years have laid themselves out and how we've been working towards them.
And I heard you just say you've both been on decennial visits, right?
Correct.
Huge.
Collaborative.
For anybody who doesn't know that.
And collaborative conferences.
That's great. I actually have another question.
Please.
Was there anything in their feedback, either commendations of the areas, that they wanted us to focus on that surprised you?
No.
No.
Nothing surprised us.
Okay.
And the priority areas were very much in line with what we had identified and what we had seen as needs throughout the school.
And I can say, because I came in, and most of this work was entirely done-
Yeah.
-right? And so it is a credit to both Dr. Waz and to Mrs. Derico, and to the committee, and to the work of the faculty at the high school, because those commendations are, you know, when the decennial visit team comes, they get all the reports in advance, and then they look to see, like, is that what we see? And so what we told them our strengths were, that's what they saw. Where we had areas of weakness or things that we knew weren't there, they worked with us on building those goals. And they worked with us on building timelines that we thought were manageable within the district and within, like, the other things that we knew were just like in our yearly cycle. And we had a really great team to work with, which made a huge difference, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
Michelle, any questions at all?
No, I'm just excited to see how number three turns out. I've worked with CPAC and Corey Michaelazik, so I've seen the impact it's had on the, in the elementary school level. So I'm very excited to see that, and I appreciate all the work it's going to take. It's a very complex moving machine, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything, sir? You good?
No, thank you.
So I want to thank you for all the work you're doing, and in case we might be fortunate that people are watching, because we get more people watching our school committees recently, I just want to review that, and I think I know this, but the visions of the vision of the graduate will help guide the decision-making of this school, this high school, for our school system as we move forward. So that's the big step and the first step out of the gate, to help guide the decision-making that follows. So sometimes we say something like vision of a graduate, or VOG, or whatever we say, and it doesn't ring or resonate with the public, so I hope everyone hears that, that the development of that is important, to take all of the next steps with depth. And then the second thing I wanted to point out to people, if they don't know any about this process, is it is a self-study reflective process coming internally. So I think it should be really clear to people that it's our faculty, it's the leadership of our school together in collaboration that is developing the depth of the study that is then being looked at by NEASK and validated by NEASK. So again, if you've never seen a decennial visit, never been part of one, it's about the reflection of the professional staff reflecting on where they are, where they need to go, and what they look like in the community. So I just think those are good takeaways, especially as we go into a process like this for those that might not know about it. And please correct anything if I missed.
No.
Yeah.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And, well, if I'll follow up, that vision, sorry, thank you. The vision of the graduate there in terms of aiming, it's the compass heading for where we want our students to get to. So, I mean, I want to ask the community members listening, where do you think our strategic goals are going to come from? It's that. I mean, it's a big deal. It's a really big deal. So, anyway, thank you for everybody who's listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and all the work you've done and will continue to do. Really, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
All right, so one update, as we know, Dr. Donovan, congratulations again to him. So when many people were off on vacation, during April vacation, he was busy defending his dissertation and concluding his many years of doctoral work, which is such a testament to him as an educational leader and as a person, being able to persevere and to do that. It's quite the feat, so very proud that he was able to accomplish that, and to do it in his first year here is just amazing. And now we'll let you go home.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome next, Ms. Lenore Testa, who's down there busy taking notes. As you know, Ms. Gracia retired last week, and so Lenore started on, yesterday. She's been very busy yesterday and today already, so really excited to have her, and I know that there's been many people that have been already popping in to say hello and introduce themselves to her.
Well, thank you, thank you for being here. Welcome to our community. Great to see I was involved a little bit in the process, and I'm really pleased to see you here and you to take up this opportunity and support us. So thanks so much, and we're really excited to have you.
Thank you, I'm very excited.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So my next update, last week, and I'm going to actually have Bill join in if he wants to add some additional comments here. We had about 25 visitors for the Massachusetts School Building Authority who came in to tour the borough, which was something that was new that they really haven't done. And it, it included our project manager from Colliers and also our architect from KBA. And because us being unique in that we did a renovation and in addition, where so many districts are doing just complete new builds. So they wanted to see how we were able to manage that. And so Bill, I'll just let you add to that.
Yeah. I mean, it was an interesting group. Mary Pickett, who is actually probably second in the MSBA structure, was there as well. And actually, two or three of the top ones were there to do this. And as Dr. Burrows said, basically, I think what they were looking is with a lot of their younger members, to kind of show what is possible. And again, you have to think out of the box. We've done it a couple of times with being able to structure building projects that have gone on for three years. The high school was another one. It's not easy. You know, thank God we had Michelle at the time and as the principal. But, you know, the process is very doable. It just, it takes a lot of support by a lot of people, including every teacher in every classroom, because we're going to constantly be moving them and adjusting them and going from there. But in the end, our price tag was no more, you know, you know, worse than any other school project could be, yet we ended up with a pretty superior project as far as the quality of, of the workmanship and the amount of space. And from what we're seeing as far as pricing goes, it was still one of the better projects that way. They had a new program, which we took advantage of, which was the acquisition of furniture through a bidding process through the state side. It saved us about 15%. We were one of the first participants to do that. We had actually already bid our furniture out prior to them coming up with the thing. And we were just about ready to sign off on it when they opened it up. And we ended up with the same vendors at a 15% reduction after the bid process. So we proved to them that that works in our process. And then we also showed them a number of things that we as a, as a town kind of value as far as how we value engineer buildings for long-term maintenance and long-term, you know, care. And, you know, had some very candid conversations with, you know, some of those things that they really need to push in other communities because we really do think there's some high values to those. But overall, I, I think they were, they were duly impressed and enjoyed the, the ability to go into classrooms and see the kids actually in those, that finished product that they helped to support.
Right.
And the whole thing, I thought, went very well.
So we, we also had, Dr. Burrows had, so, and then with Karen McKinnon, our literacy K to eight curriculum coordinator, teachers that were visiting to observe our teachers and teaching literacy on the same day. So thank you to our borough teachers who had many, many people in their classrooms on that day. But they just take it in stride. They're so used to having people come in and go out and visit. So my other update, something that the school committee's been very involved in, which was the policy IMG, which was our policy for any therapy animals. And this was done over a year and a half ago, I think, now.
Or more, I don't know.
Before, okay. So it's been a while.
We were still at the high school.
Okay.
Yeah.
We were still at the high school. So it's been a long, it's been a long time. But we spent a long time, or you spent a long time on that policy because of all of the things that needed to go into it as far as approval, certifications, the handler, insurance, so many things that needed to go into that. I'm, I'm excited to announce, and this also goes along with all the work that we've been doing for social emotional learning and report, in efforts to be able to support students, that Kami Tadoldi, our K to 12 music director, has Duke, who is a boxer, who has been certified, has gone through all of the certifications, completed all of the trainings, passed all of that, all of the insurances and all of those things. So we will slowly be able to introduce, we're going to start at the middle school, high school. And because she does have all the responsibilities here, it'll be, you know, a little bit, you know, maybe an hour a week here or there. And that will be more introductions that are coming out. And certainly for parents, if we have any students that are, you know, afraid of dogs and don't want to have any part and want to stand back, all of that will be well communicated for parents as well. But just wanted to, to share that she's meeting with both Ms. Frazier and Dr. Donovan to talk about what that might look like and some opportunities to bring Duke in.
That's great.
Cool.
So that's exciting.
Yeah.
Earlier, my other update earlier this evening is we had Stacy Burkebeck, who is our manager at the middle school. And she received the award for Massachusetts and Northeast Regional Manager of the Year from the School Nutrition Association.
Yay.
So that was really exciting. And that was like five o'clock. I tried to get it, but Facebook is blocked for us. So I couldn't watch it. But I know that, you know, what a great, you know, testament to everything that Stacy does over. And if you haven't met her, talk about some energy. She is a bundle of energy. So that particular award recognizes anyone that, when we think about food service, dedication, ingenuity, compassion shown for cafeteria managers who have excelled in providing high-quality nutritious meals to students throughout the school year. So congratulations to Stacy at the Ahern. Definitely well deserved. And the only other thing, busy, lots of, you know, AP testing, MCAS, math testing that's taking place as we start to head towards, you know, the, the home stretch, I guess, that you would say. We've got drama productions coming up, weekend after this one at the Borough. And then the Ahern musical, our students are going off to Ellington at the end of next week. And then obviously, town meeting next week as well.
Jim Pops next week as well, this weekend too.
Yes, Pops is this weekend.
And the Pops.
Pops is this weekend.
That's right.
That's right. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Good hearing none. Next, we have to discuss our 2023-24 appointments. But first, I should probably, we should formally welcome, I don't know if I formally welcomed correctly enough, Michelle Thaxton to our school committee. Thank you, welcome. And congratulations. But I, I think the, I always think this for each one of us every day. But the welcome is that you stepped up to volunteer your services for the benefit of this community. And so really appreciated that time, that effort, and your dedication to the success. So welcome. And we're so pleased you're here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Brent, hands up first.
I'll do anything, maybe except chair. But I'll, I would love to return to the Policy Subcommittee, but I'll do whatever anybody wants. I mean, I, I did budget for two years here and then three years on ATCOM. But I would love to return to Policy Subcommittee if only because elements of our committee had asked about a more comprehensive review. So anyway, that's just my thought.
Thank you. Rob, any thoughts for you?
Yeah, I would, I would also like to stay on the Policy Subcommittee. I've been, I feel like we have a relatively light year and I've enjoyed what we've done, but I'd like to stay with that.
Okay. Sarah?
I enjoyed budget this past year and I'd be happy to stick where I'm at and go with the flow.
Is there anybody on the committee perhaps has some, I don't know, some treasurer experience in their background? Oh, my God, I am wondering.
Michelle, any preference for the other spot on the Budget Subcommittee?
Michelle, I'm so sorry. If you want policy, take it.
No, no.
I just, I know you have years of experience doing this.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with being on budget.
Great.
If it all works out, that'd be great.
So do we, do we have to take, we have to take a vote on the, on the member? Okay. So, so we, a motion, we can do it together, right? We can do, or do we have to do each member?
I would do the, I would do them separate. Each committee separate.
Each committee separate, but we can do both members of the committee.
Correct.
That's what I was thinking. Okay.
Yeah, that's fair.
So can we have a motion for, to nominate Brent and Rob to the Policy Subcommittee? A motion for that?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Brent Rutter and Rob Canfield for the Policy Subcommittee for Foxborough School Committee.
Second?
I'd second.
Michelle, second. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero. And then a motion for Sarah and Michelle for the Budget Subcommittee.
Make a motion that the Budget Subcommittee be composed of Sarah Ledony and Michelle Thaxton.
Second.
Second by Brent Rutter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. We have our subcommittees. Well done, everyone.
Yay.
Everyone kind of just like jumped into their lanes. It was like a, a great yield, a great moment. Thank you.
I don't do that on the highway.
Yeah, no, don't. Seven, seven thirty. We're, we are moving along.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, we are moving along.
I might have a big update, you know, for Parks and Rec.
Okay, there could be, yeah, yeah.
Seven hours long.
Next is the school committee vote to reappoint Dr. Burrows as a voting member of the Bye County Collaborative Board of Directors for 23-24 school year. Most of us has been through this each year. But Michelle, just for you, it is, it is our duty as a school committee to, to take a vote for our superintendent is, is the normal process for the Byco Collaborative. And we have to do that annually and appoint her to that, to that Byco Collaborative, which is part of the collaborative that we, many of the school systems are part of. Do you wish to add anything to that?
No, there's 20 school systems. And just as you serve as a school committee for the community of Foxborough, we are kind of like the school committee, if you will, but with the board of directors for the Byco Collaborative that represents 20 different districts. Recently, you voted in CCONC into the collaborative.
You did.
So you might be thinking, did we already have this on the agenda? That was voting them in to be a member. And this is, as you said, that annual vote to reappoint me.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we reappoint Dr. Amy Burrows as a voting member of the Bye County Collaborative Board of Directors for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Oh.
Gotcha, he beat you to it. So any further discussion about that topic? All in favor of the motion as presented? Five zero. Thank you very much. And thank you for serving for us again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows.
Any, any, it's seven ten, Brent.
Saw that.
So any, I, I'm at Other Matters. Did I, did we miss anything? Other Matters, go around the horn?
No, that's fine. Yeah, do what you're going to do.
Yeah. Nathan, anything?
Thirteen days left for seniors and I think I still have 32 days, which is unfortunate. That's a lot of days.
What did you do? I mean, because the other kids have 20. I mean, I'm just asking. It's no offense.
You know, it's a lot, it's a lot of days left. It's fine.
Be strong.
Thank you. Thank you, Nate. Bill, anything?
I just wanted to advise the school committee that because of funding we received through Circuit Breaker, additional transportation, I went in front of the CIP committee today to ask to purchase a fourth bus using our budget money. And basically what happened was in FY '22, we received about 118,000 in transportation reimbursement from the state. It was the first time we ever received anything. In FY '23, we received 358,000. They went from paying 25, 75% of 25% of our cost to paying 75% of 100% of our cost. Obviously, we didn't budget it because we didn't get that notification until about nine months later. The issue with CIP budget is obviously it's extremely tight and they only had the ability to fund two of the four buses that the mechanics were suggesting that we replace.
Sure.
Previously, we got one of the other buses through our budget. And based on that surplus, which equals just about the, the equivalent of the two buses, I thought it prudent that we go in front of them again and ask for that one and use the money that way. It's transportation for transportation, makes a lot of sense. And obviously, it was not money we anticipated having. And it takes that much of a load off the town from a future CIP process. The biggest problem we're facing is that the buses we bring in are, are gas-powered buses.
Yeah.
Company making the engines is no longer making the engine. So there could be a full year hiatus before new buses are available. So having these four buses replaced this year, we typically replace three a year, but having the four buses replaced gives us the potential to make it through if we have to go a full year with no buses. And it's, so it seems like the right move to make at this point in time.
Mr. Chair.
And did you get response from?
CIP committee agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Brett?
And am I, if you would, for the fifth time this year, refresh us, is it true that like last year, we had requested X buses and we lopped one off?
No, it was actually the, the year of COVID.
The year prior.
That we lost a couple of the buses. We actually lost them all, but they brought them back in, at a later meeting, a couple of them.
It was more than one.
But they didn't bring back, they didn't bring back the, the three or four that we were asking to brought back too. So we were kind of in a deficit.
Yeah, we were.
The other problem that's happened is that the buses that we have, have had to be on the road more because in effect, at first, the bus, the buses we were supposed to get after the COVID year didn't come for a full year. Typically, it only took a few months. So all the buses we had, had put more mileage on them because we had to make them last longer with the, waiting for the, the few buses. This year's buses, which typically would have been here in September, October, didn't show up until about a week ago. So everything is kind of getting delayed and it's putting more mileage on the buses that we have. And obviously, the other reason, and, and the important thing is we've gone to gas engines because A, they're much more economical and easier for the mechanics to work on than the diesels. The diesels have a component to them that effectively creates a lot of problems with them. It's a fuel component. So we're always having to have those services. The gas engines don't have that. So, so moving the whole fleet to gas engines over a period of time makes a lot of sense. And typically, the reasons you buy diesels is you're looking for 250 to 500,000 miles. Well, in 10 years, we just about have 100,000 miles. So obviously, you don't need to buy that engine strength. And in 10 years, our bodies are starting to rip up.
We cook them faster.
So, you know, so the body is gone, but the engine's still there. So I think at that point, it doesn't make any sense that you paid the extra for the diesel and then you had a harder time maintaining it. But, you know, because the body's gone, you're not going to keep it anyway. So.
Makes sense.
Well, thanks. Thanks for that update. That's great. Well-used funds. It's really excellent. Thank you. Dr. Burrows, anything?
I have two things. Yesterday was National Principals Day. And I don't believe I tweeted about it, but we have excellent principals. And I just wanted to give them a shout out. I know you saw here with Dr. Donovan, he's really hit the ground running with his work. We've been very fortunate with the principals that we continue to have in the district and also our new hires this year. We have a great team. And it's, it is wonderful to work with them. So thank you to them. And my second thing is that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I wanted to say thank you to all of our parent-teacher organizations throughout the district. They have some wonderful events planned for our teachers. They've been coming through my inbox this week. And it's wonderful to see a community that really supports their teachers. So I'm, I'm excited about all of those events. But just in general, our teachers here are excellent. I continue to be impressed every time I visit classrooms here in Foxborough and every time I sit down with our teachers. I was just in a meeting earlier today with our specialists. And they're really, we have incredible teachers and specialists and directors throughout the district. They do an excellent job. So thank you for all you do.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Burrows?
Echo what Dr. Burrows says. And other than that, I think I pretty much covered a lot.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're here.
Sarah?
I have a couple of Parks and Rec updates. It's funny, I don't know where to look where I'm sitting now. So we had the Tais and Tierras dance over the weekend. And I got feedback that it was the best event yet. Volunteers were amazing. So again, we have Community Warrior Club and the National Honor Society students who step up time and time again to make these events really super special. So, and then we also have Touch a Truck, May 13th. And I just wanted to let people know that they actually have quiet hour, the first hour of the event for any kids that have any sensory issues or, you know, need lower stimulation. So the first hour is quiet hour of Touch a Truck. And just as a point of pride, we have all NHS and community warriors signed up to help at that event, too. So.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Good update. Brett?
Sure. My only other matter is a reminder to those members of the community who may be confused about the purpose of Other Matters on our agenda. There are three purposes of Other Matters. They are for committee members to do one of three things. Announcements without discussion, reminders, as Sarah has just done, without discussion, and three requests of the larger committee for future consideration, which means the committee is not supposed to discuss them back and forth as they do with information-only items on our agenda, and certainly never, ever, 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 ever with all the Vs on the planet, to vote. all the Vs on the planet to vote on them. And I say this because there's some members of the community who've been confused about this, that Other Matters might be used as a Trojan horse to push through policy matters which are not on the public agenda. And I say this resoundingly, that every member of this committee uses Other Matters responsibly. And if somebody were to go outside of the field of that, it would be beyond our purview and potentially a violation of open meeting law. And the last thing I'll say about Open Matters is, the reason I believe, and you're just hearing me, no one else in this committee, that you want that flexibility in Open Matters is because if the chair is the person who sets the agenda and the committee has to delineate everything they want in Open Matters, I believe, my own opinion only, that it gives the chair too much power. So I would prefer personally, an Open Matters situation which allows any member on this committee to put forward an announcement, a reminder, a request of the committee. And with that, I'll move on.
Thank you. Rob?
Nothing.
Michelle?
Nothing.
Thank you. So I'll leave Other Matters with just a thanks to all of, to Michelle Raymond for her service in the committee over the past few years. Thank you.
She ran during COVID.
Yes.
I mean, come on.
Yeah.
That's terrible.
And also a thanks to the four members who were on the committee with Michelle over the past few years. If I have it right and I reflect on all the different things that we have done as a committee, I think we've, we've worked and learned about service animals over the years. I think we've done CIP improvements. I think we've worked on NEAS accreditations. I think we've worked very deeply on MTS, Multi-Tierce System of Supports, and we've